Where'd he go?
Alex.
Alex, so where'd he go?
The bathroom.
Oh.
Alex went to get a cord for him.
Um, so.
From home?
Fred, you wanna go ahead and just start through it all?
Yes.
Fred Rogers.
Chrissy Black.
Doug, you can.
I can.
Alright, so we do that.
Alex is here, so.
We have Alex coming, you have no idea where he at. So, first thing on the meeting minutes is approval of last month's meeting minutes. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to read over it. That was, uh, probably just a long meeting and discussion with that. If you haven't had a chance, go ahead and just glance over it.
None of this is final, it's just stuff that they're talking about, huh?
That's correct.
Right.
You're a long ways away from finals, so.
Cause I do have a problem with the three minutes per acre. You know, I think we need to keep our R40. I mean, that's something I'm strongly with before, so. It was just, it's in the mail, it was a recommendation, but.
Well, we're not getting, not to interrupt, just to clarify, we're not getting rid of the R40. It's being rebranded as SFR1. The reason being is that there's actual bill language going through the General Assembly that would require municipalities and counties to rename their zoning districts based on the amount of density that you're gonna allow in that district. And so, your R40 would become SFR1, translated to one dwelling unit per forty thousand square feet. Um, we are recommending you consider adding two additional general use zoning districts because also remember, there's bill language going through the General Assembly that would compound and require higher density and intensity in communities to address affordable housing. So, we created two districts, but we, as we indicated last month, we're not looking to prezone anything, we're just creating the district. So, as you grow, you would be able to implement those districts. That was the goal. So, just to make sure I'm, you know, I'm explaining to you what the issue was.
Now that everybody's had a chance to review them, do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes as they are, or does somebody want to make amendments? So, I need a motion.
Yeah, we should.
Okay, do I have a second?
I wasn't here, so I got a better chance to look over it.
I had neither.
Well, that's part of me, I didn't read everything.
You can vote.
It's consecutive.
Okay, okay, I'll second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All the clients? So, we accept the meeting minutes as is written. Alright.
Let me tell you what happened to the cord. Uh, there was a meeting in here that the mayor happened to be involved in, and I think the gentleman using the computer and the, uh, and the projector took our cord.
No.
Uh, perfect.
You did not waste your time.
I got two inch miles and a display board.
So, will it, Michael, hook it up and get prior to doing it?
Sorry, I would be here faster, but I found another person, you can kind of speed them on six oh one. Yeah.
Wow.
Oh, it's quite quick.
Hell, yeah.
So, good evening. How are you all? There we go.
Come out of your Christmas bones.
That's okay, I don't get, I don't get those anymore.
One question to my mind, I think it also denotes, when are we going to go over our comments and concerns on this process?
When you say comments and concerns, what you submitted to your town staff in terms of provisions to Articles 1 through 3? Uh, we can do that in January.
Okay.
Cause then we're just kinda creating a work in progress right now, right, Mike?
Correct.
I think we're going, uh, Ed's going to present our progress to the town council in December.
He's not, no, well, he was coming in December. What we decided to.
So, unfortunately, now, your meeting in December with your elected officials is December the 9th. I've got two other meetings because of the Christmas holiday that I have to figure out how I'm gonna cover. So, I'm gonna write a detailed update to your board, and then, uh, we're gonna meet with you in January, meet with them in January, so that they understand, don't have any questions about where we are and where we're going. So, uh, they're also gonna hopefully be giving me the same feedback that I'm gonna be asking you tonight, because I'm gonna be sending you some homework over December, uh, to start looking at possible goals for the following. So, Michael Harvey, in focus, sorry for the bulk in terms of getting this set up. You have a couple of items that were sent to you. The first is a basic definition framework of various land use categories that we've depicted on your future land use map. I wanna remind you all that in focus, created a base future land use map, which again, you were provided a copy, based on existing land use. So, right here is your future land use map with various future land use categories. Rural, neighborhood, transitional neighborhood, civic, mixed use, downtown, commercial, and employment. These are the standard land use categories we recommend communities, uh, consider. You're not gonna be using all of them, but we do try to give you a full breadth and width of what they could be. And in looking at this map, what I'm gonna remind you is, you have a definition section. So, rural is exactly what you think. It's land in rural areas with low intensity, low density residential development, approximately one dwelling unit per acre, which will factor into what you currently have in most of your community. Category defines lands used for agricultural production, agricultural based businesses and other related activities. It is not an area where you anticipate large residential lots subdivisions, nor do you have any existing utilities. Primary is gonna, uh, primary utility issues are gonna be provided by independent septic and wells. Okay? That will be the predominant portion of your community based on current development trends. The next land use category is neighborhood. Uh, identifies areas within a community where existing residential development has or is occurring at a median density, one dwelling unit, uh, or one acre, one to two dwelling units per acre property. Um, you don't have to have urban services available, but they may be. They would include single family and duplex homes, and any appropriate land use or accessory use. Transitional neighborhood, that's where you're getting from your more rural to mid-density to your more urban areas. I am almost positive. And Ed and I have already talked about this. You don't have any transitional neighborhood, and I don't think you're gonna be having any transitional neighborhood, but we're gonna get feedback from you all if you want us to include it in your plan. Uh, mixed use is where you're gonna have a mixture of retail and residential. Well, guess what? There's no surprise you don't have a mixed use area. Um, and again, in talking with Ed this evening, the transitional neighborhood and mixed use are probably gonna go because you don't have any current development trends to support it, but I'm not doing my job if I don't give you all the tools in the toolbox and you give me some direction. Civic, uh, those are areas providing educational, medical, government, religious, or other institutional uses. You do have civic. Several key pockets of civic throughout your jurisdiction, Carolina Wood. You don't have a town center, and you don't have, uh, downtown area, but we're gonna talk about that tonight, because that's part of what we wanna talk about in terms of designating your future land use map areas where you might wanna consider to see some additional development opportunity. Commercial, and then employment manufacturing. Commercial is exactly what you think it is. It's retail, it's, it's office, it's commercial development, employment manufacturing, uh, areas you're targeting for economic development and activity, including light manufacturing. So, what Ed has asked us to consider, and what we're looking for your feedback is, uh, transitional neighborhood and mixed use, Ed has recommended they go away. We're gonna get and solicit your feedback, and obviously, tonight, if you don't have a response, you don't have to have a response, but your staff has recommended these two go away. And we want to talk about, when we get to the land use map areas where you think neighborhood, where you may get one to two dwelling units per acre, might be feasible in your community. Where you want a potential area for town center, if you have it, that's the downtown area. Your commercial and your employment manufacturing. Now, if you all will forgive me, I wanna remind you what your current map says. This is your current future land use map. This is your, what I'll call the rural category. That's what our designation would be for it. You've identified this area here as future commercial area. That's from my standpoint, where you envision the town center construct, or even the commercial construct. Okay? Um, you have key pockets of what is B4 listed on your future land use map, and then you have LI. LI, I'm assuming Ed is light industrial in your future land use map? Okay? So, when we get to your new map... This is your new map. Again, let's be color coded. You'll note that most everything here is rural. That's the one dwelling unit expected per acre. Okay? We've identified pockets of what I am gonna call your neighborhood, which is where your density is a little greater than one dwelling unit per acre. Doesn't mean that's what they have to be, but we drew this map based on existing land use and existing density. Okay? Existing lot size. Uh, civic. This includes the fire station, the town hall, several churches, schools. That's that land use category. Again, mixed use, you don't have, transitional neighborhood, you don't have, and, and we've already got direction from your staff to kill it, we'll talk about that in a minute. We did not designate any downtown, but bluntly, we would probably look to focus in this area where it is under current map. Commercial, you have sporadic commercial throughout your community. You also have sporadic employment manufacturing, couple spots here and there. Primarily, you've just had commercial. So... What I'd like you all to consider, and again, I don't necessarily expect you to have an answer this evening, the majority of your land use is gonna be rural, cause that's what your current development trend is. Neighborhood, to Mr. Rogers, to your question, that would include the R2, the R3. Everybody needs to remember, you designate something on a future land use map, it doesn't mean you're automatically changing your zoning designation, your zoning map, to allow those uses.
Doesn't that open it up for the, I mean, I feel like that opens it up for the.
It does, but somebody has to come and rezone the property consistent with this plan and go through the legislative process to do it.
Right.
Now, and I'm not interrupting, Ms. Black, but I understand the concern, and I'm not trying to say you shouldn't have it, but that's part of the reason we're here tonight to talk about areas where we might think higher intensive residential development may be practical. And if you don't think it is.
Well, I'm just asking why, what is the intent of term to, to, I mean?
The intent from my standpoint is, the North Carolina General Assembly, uh, has indicated that they are going to require communities to have greater intensity, greater density, and bluntly, I'm trying to help you plan as best as I can for that future activity.
That's still in the law.
I think, I think you, I think if they don't see that, they're gonna be concerned that we really attend.
Yeah.
And so, we'll show it. It'll have to go through the process. Everybody will understand it, it may be voted in or out, but still, it's, it's there.
So, the bill on its point, we talked about this very briefly in our first orientation meeting with your elected officials. Remember that the General Assembly's approval was called a study bill, and they're gonna be studying who gets to play municipality in this state. Uh, I actually served one client that, in my humble opinions, is at the top of the list for the General Assembly to eliminate, revoke their charter, and cease them from being a town. In fact, the study bill, in my humble opinion, was directly designed to go after that community. And others, they're not alone, but the issue's going to be, what services are you providing for the taxes? What benefits are there to local residents by being incorporated? And are you really providing a necessary essential services or are you double taxing local properties? That's what I've heard from several members of the General Assembly. I know you're not gonna like it, and I don't like having to tell it to you.
I, I don't like it.
I don't like it either. The more neighborhoods that we put in, the more taxes that we're gonna have to do, and the more things that we're gonna have to pay for. So, it's sort of tit for tat, right now, at this point, we utilize.
If we extend on our R40, you know, which we have, and everybody wrote it on, and the community says what they want, I think it sets precedent, and I think it's what we ought to do.
Well, I just want you all to acknowledge the advice I'm giving you, and if you do end up having your charter revoked, please understand that we did the best to help you.
I think that's a long way.
I think that could be hard to do. I think we can fight.
The General Assembly's done that to several communities in the early eighties, it's not hard to do, it's, the General Assembly's the one that gives you the right to exist as a community. Now, I'm not saying you don't have a right to your opinion, and I don't wanna come up with being argumentative.
No, no, no.
I just think it's a long way off.
I'm not taking.
I think, I think that there have to be a lot of things that we're assuming are on, you know, passed at this point, maybe they will, maybe they won't. There could be changes.
But if we put it and say, hey, we're already, we're already giving in.
Right.
I, I, I mean, I would fight it tooth and nail if we had to raise taxes to hire attorneys to do it, I'd for it, so.
I'm giving you my advice, you don't have to take it, and it's not personal, and I appreciate.
And I appreciate your opinion, but that's.
Where's this assembly on forcing, uh, patented water treatment packages on townships?
The General Assembly has modified the rules regulations governing the development of package treatment plant systems.
That's essentially where we're at, we can color this yellow all we want to, but until we're forced to accept with, uh, patented, patented treatment plants, because we don't have sewer septic in our town.
You don't?
So, really, you can color this whole map yellow, but until they have a way to do, deal with sewer septic, it doesn't matter, but if we're forced to accept these treatment packages, then.
In my opinion, at some point, we will, it may be ten years from now.
Are there, is there anything we can do to?
No.
Put additional handcuffs on that? In terms of forcing communities to have X amount of dollars set aside, or?
I'm saying, no, I'm saying your developers will, will, uh, go to the legislature and say, listen, we, we, we've got the technology to do it, but Fairview won't let us do it. We want the state to come in and say, it's a, this is state, it's a state-approved system, why can't we have it? And then you're gonna have to have it.
And the General Assembly's making it easier for those state-approved systems to go in. So, here's what I'd like you to consider with this map. I don't want you to consider the existing yellow that we've thrown on here, because again, that's just based on existing density and existing land use development. What I'd like you to focus on is, are there areas where it makes potential logical sense where you want higher intensity development, the potential for it, where you think there may be future water sewer provision? And plan accordingly, have it on your land use map, that these are the areas where we would consider it based on certain assumptions. Remember how the R2 of the SFR2 and SFR3 read in our draft ordinance? They have to have public utilities, or a similar recognized state system. Because I do think you are gonna find that state of North Carolina, uh, will be approving more package treatment systems moving forward for individual communities. I'm dealing with one now in Unionville.
It's just a matter of time before vacant land becomes, hey, we gotta do something.
Is, is council gonna see this map next, next month? We don't, we don't have to do any voting on this, right?
No, no, this is not a vote.
You're presenting an idea of.
Yeah, this is not a vote, this is just me explaining the idea, and then you all thinking about it.
I would like to hear the people who get elected to have a voice.
Yeah, oh, they would have to approve it.
From my standpoint, one of the items we discussed at the last meeting is if it made logical sense for an area that you might see more intensive development, where would that be?
I don't think Fairview has the, any geographic area for it because of the slant rock and the Carolina hill splitter, and according to the North Carolina wild side resources, you know, we just, we can't, this thing, an area that condones high density.
It's gonna come up brief, it's gonna come up Indian Trail Fairview, it's probably gonna be along six oh one, it's probably gonna be along 218. I mean, that, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure, when, where is, uh, this water treatment? Where does, uh, water treatment stop on Indian Trail Fairview?
I don't know.
So, where do you mean?
Yeah.
I don't think it's on Indian Trail Fairview.
I think it's at Bridge, I think it stops at Amy Bridge.
I wanna say it's past Amy Bridge, because there's Indian Trail Fairviews.
Okay.
I passed out, I drove that way every single time I worked.
So, let me ask the question.
I'd have to create that one.
If we focused on a potential study area right in here... Looking at that area specifically, where you've already got some existing subdivision lots that are smaller than forty thousand square foot in size, would that make sense to you?
Now, Michael, we don't have any lots that are that small.
Uh, that.
I thought the only lots that we have that were smaller than that were, um, just a couple, there's not that many. That road off of 218, Indian Trail Fairview.
I don't know of any, any residential buildable lots, any fairview that are under.
Reprovision, Indian, 218, Indian Trail, and then there's a road right here that's under 118.
They're all over there.
Yep, they all are.
Okay? But from a density standpoint, we have to track it not only from a minimum lot size, but a density. So, I'm gonna go back to my original question. If this becomes our study area, would that be reasonable, in your opinion? Along Concord Highway?
I would think so, either north or south, that's where the sewer's probably gonna come from, either Cabarrus County.
Or, that's our, right.
So, uh, I mean, you go down 218.
You probably have a trunk line up, six oh one.
Just basically, look where the water line is now.
Right.
That's where the sewer's going to follow up.
Okay. The other question I have is, if this is the crossroads where Town Hall is, is this the area where you all envision the concept of what we'll call a downtown, or a commercial area? Does that make some sense?
Yeah.
Now, council.
Down through six oh one?
The council has voted on that to be the downtown area.
That would be fun.
They have, yeah, I thought six oh one.
Michael, please.
Sorry, sir.
The council has voted that's the downtown area.
Okay. So, let me ask the question about commercial, and, and this is more of a long-range planning question, and this is why we're doing this. Right now, you've got pockets, commercial here, you've got pockets of commercial in six oh one. From your standpoint, is there any commercial area in the community that we need to identify as part of this plan, or should it just be focused on the intersection here, and those key areas that's already commercial, you're gonna preserve it?
I think that's why it's good stuff.
Brief in six oh one was supposed to be a commercial, was supposed to be a commercial area, two eighteen's.
Okay, so, six oh one here.
Uh, six oh one, 218, which are downtown areas, is the commercial, and then six oh one, it, uh, reef, this is further up.
Okay. So, I'm gonna create commercial, what I'm gonna call commercial notes, or even employment notes, and it's just gonna be an area on the map where the town might consider, so I'm gonna focus on this intersection here, we've already got some existing commercial activity, obviously, what we're calling the downtown area. Is there any interest, do you see the need for any additional commercial areas or employment areas that I'm not seeing based on your current land use policy? And again, you're not having to give me the final answer tonight, I, but these are the kind of questions I need you to think about.
I would just leave the two areas itself, and then let a developer come in and say, hey, I'm wanting to do an industrial park.
And that's fine, and that's an amendment to your comp plan and an amendment to your zoning map. Remember that the board can amend its comp plan by approving a zoning map amendment. That's under state law now. Okay? So, you all are not worried, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I just wanna make sure I'm on the same page, so that when I go back and re-jigger this map to meet your concerns, you've got these pocket areas of what appear to be some form of employment center, commercial development activity. You want those preserved, obviously, but any expansion I need to worry about from your standpoint are just the three areas we identified. You're gonna continue to study.
Brett Haillier. That, right there, old bench in six oh one.
Yeah.
I was gonna say Brett Haillier, because we already got, uh, we already got the shop, and we got the, uh, it's. Brett Haillier's not even on your map, it's light industrial.
No, it's over here.
It's right.
That's already been, you know.
It's already been approved as such, permanent. Yeah, we've already got some, uh, commercial on there.
Okay.
I assume it's gonna, I continue, it's gonna continue to grow off that road. So, there's several areas that we're lacking on this map.
Okay.
So, this question is, are you, you guys want to sort of go through and fill in the gaps?
Yeah, we have to.
Or, that, that's part of our, that's part of our responsibility, but we wanted to give you the general map as we see it right now. So, what I'm, again, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but I wanna make sure I'm not wasting my time or your time, more importantly. We're gonna focus down in here for some potential higher intensity development, whatever that means. We're obviously focusing on this being your downtown with commercial, and then brief and six oh one is another commercial area.
Yes.
And then where we find, what I'll call isolated industrial or commercial areas, we're gonna note them appropriately. Uh, the civic construct that we have, all this identifies, and it's not gonna change the zoning, but this just identifies what the land use category is. So, your churches, your government centers, schools, are all gonna be in the civic land use category. Okay? So, your homework, what I'd like you to do is take this map.
I'm gonna say you got to wait in line.
You're fine. And play with it, I want you to play with it, and I want you to give me back that critical comment. There's no wrong answer here. The only wrong answer is for a question that hasn't been posed. Okay? So, you're gonna give me your feedback, I already got one component of feedback that you would prefer everything he designated residential that's yellow, except maybe for the key area down on six oh one that we had alluded to, where there is the potential for water sewer to be in the future. Now, as I've shared with Ed, and I'll share with you tonight, some of the policy initiatives that we're gonna be recommending to you all, and ultimately to the elected officials, doesn't commit you to paying for or encouraging water sewer, it would commit you to participate in regional discussion with the county and your sister communities. But there's gonna be a language that says, Fairview is not committing to building any utility infrastructure, because that's hugely expensive.
Yeah.
And I'm not doing that to you, because I've heard you loud and clear even before tonight, how you want your community to grow. My job is to make sure that I'm emulating that as we get onto this map. Going back to this definitional framework, I know you all looked at it, and just because you gave me an answer tonight, doesn't necessarily mean you can't change your mind. Sorry, my mouse keeps getting lost. Ed has recommended, and I would concur, that traditional transitional neighborhood and mixed use go away, you don't want it. And I'm seeing a lot of shaken heads, yeah, you, you just don't see the need for it, which is fine. My job is to give you all your options, and you give me the type of direction. What would you all consider to be employment manufacturing areas in your community? So, what an employment area is, is where you encourage a large-scale, light industrial or. local employment center to locate. Where does that exist, or what's your vision for where that could go in your community?
Does it have to go anywhere?
Doesn't have to go anywhere in your community.
Well, I mean, we've got some.
We got, we did.
Yeah, Hudson Brothers.
Along the highways.
All right, so Hudson Brothers is where, Forgiveness.
Two eighteen, Old Dutch.
Okay. So if I look at this map. Is that?
Six oh one, Old Dutch. And here is, we keep following, Old Dutch down, three eighteen.
Got it. So is that the screen area?
Yeah.
We've got that as economic and manufacturing, okay? You all are comfortable with the notion that if I wanted to do another economic, uh, development area, employment area, manufacturing area, that I'm coming through your process, your legislative process, to convince you about to make the recommendation, and then your elected officials at a duly advertised hearing, that it's reasonable, right? That's what you want, you know? We're not predetermining necessarily areas on your future land use map, except those areas you're telling me, which is going to be your downtown, your northern area, and a little bit of the southern area. Everything else is going to be current land use. All right? I'd like you to review these definitions, see if you have any concerns, and give me some feedback. These are the generic definitions we recommend to all communities when we start this process. And doing this five, six years, I've never had a community not tweak my language, which is fine, that's why we show it to you, okay? That's the whole point of this. All right. Any questions?
I still want us to stick to the one unit per acre.
I heard it.
I mean, I think that's crucial. I don't care what the legislature do, let them say that, that's why they made good attorneys, yeah?
I don't even think that they would.
I don't think they would either, that's just my opinion. Because that's what the people of this community said, that's what the elected officials promised them, I think we are.
I respect that, and I, I'm not here to advocate.
And I appreciate you, Michael, you, exactly.
No, no, that's why we're here doing this.
It might be, let's say, you have to do it on a case-by-case basis. We're not saying, okay, we won't.
Right.
Me, I don't have a big area that I'm going to put, um, Town Hall.
I told you this was going to happen last month.
It's okay.
Let's develop, come to us, and then he's got a amount of information. He's got foot on the drawings, he's got additional things he has to do for the improvement of the property, so, let him come to us. But that's, I think we go ahead and say, okay, we're looking at this area right here to be high density. Oh my gosh, I might move to the last.
Well, that's, well, that's the thing, I think that.
Too hot.
I don't think in this region.
People come here because they like the, the community is rural, and.
You're predominantly going to continue to have the development at one unit per forty thousand square foot minimum lots.
But if you introduce Town Homes, then you introduce like condos.
Right.
You introduce, there's got to be someone, people to eat, and then you got to have, you know, it's a trickle-down effect, that.
No, no.
You sound like you're from the north.
That's a valid observation, a valid argument, I might only counter to that.
She sounds like she's from New York.
No, I mean, I'm from Atlanta, I'm from Atlanta, and I, and I live there, and I can appreciate that there's a space for that.
If you think it's not going to happen here, fully yourself.
If you plan for it, you've at least limited work to go, and that's going to be.
Probably twenty years, right?
It could be in the next twenty years or so. But I think your, your people, if you place, if you have a good place to live, people are going to want to live with you. No question about it. And they're going to pressure the state to, to, you to accept the sewer systems when you do that.
What I'm hearing you say is that it's not good on the map, does not mean that.
She might not live with that.
No, because I'm going to have some regulatory components in it that they have to make, because it would be very difficult, because I'm shooting. So, okay, uh, let's, let's, uh, we'll get back to this. It's all good. So, let's talk a little bit about the survey results, which weren't eye-opening, based on the initial conversation I had with Ed when we were discussing the potential of doing this. We had seventy-eight respondents to the first question, do you reside in Fairview, obviously the overwhelming majority said yes. And no, I don't know the seven people that said they didn't, but they responded, and there we go. About the president. What do you like about Fairview? Why don't you take a quick guess at what the role?
Yeah.
Slow-paced, quiet.
Yep.
Second was small-town view. Family-friendly, low prime, sense of community, affordability, all I'm hearing here is no surprises, and I get it. Okay? What do you dislike about the community? Guess what my overwhelming response was?
They want a heritage theater out there.
No, nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Go out there and steal his field.
Well, the, the, the next, at, at, about, let's say fifteen percent of the answer was not enough restaurants or stores, goes to your point. Next was not enough parks. Um, I don't understand what poor property, poor property maintenance is, um, but I'll.
I think we can.
I think you read between the lines on that.
Yeah.
We have some pictures of reading meetings today, for sure.
Guess what? Oh, well.
The country.
As long as it, listen, as long as it doesn't violate the ordinance, what do you care? And, and you, you're listening to a government official say that too, okay? Where do you wish your community's future to be?
I could hear that.
You all want to retain the residents, that's effectively sixty percent of the answer. Several people want more parks and recreation facilities, okay?
Wow, we got a beautiful park, we've got a beautiful park.
They said more.
Yeah, they want more.
But then we buy all that acreage back there that's not.
We got plenty.
It's a protest.
You will.
Let's report this here.
Well, this is dumb.
That's what.
The survey, when was it done?
Big cars.
Weeks ago.
We want a bedroom park.
The next was more restaurants. Uh, this is curious to me, more sidewalks. Um, that's not going to happen.
You've got to remember, this is seventy people now.
Yeah.
It's, it's.
Well, seventy-eight, but yeah, it's your point, it's awful. More sidewalks, um, that's not going to happen.
Some of those bike lanes is what we need.
And I'll tell you what, it's not going to happen. The Department of Transportation doesn't maintain sidewalks, they hate it. Unless you all want to develop a local roads management program, there's not going to be sidewalks. So, while I respect the answer, you never discount what somebody says in the survey. It's not practical for me to recommend to you that you're going to have sidewalk programs.
I want to say in our, um, major subdivision ordinance is we require sidewalks to be a part of that, right?
And like.
And it's, all we need is more major subdivisions, right?
Well, I'm not advocating that.
You want to be a lot back if you did.
Need the bike lanes on buildings.
You said it on the front end, it's a sewer question.
Yep.
So, what is.
You got the sewer, then you could ask for higher density.
Yeah, number two.
Get your sidewalks.
Then you can get your sidewalks.
Number two.
So what does everybody fear?
New York.
Well, over eighty percent of respondents told me it was lost to small-town people. Next highest, which I find funny, too much for her. Whereas the two answers all I got was you need more restaurants and more this, add the other, so. That's why I, I argue to you that as we start looking at your future land use map, we need to target those areas where it's reasonable. And, and that's why we're doing this exercise. Sagnation of growth, how many people answered that? Four, okay?
Not sure what that meant.
Um, if I had to read people's mind, uh, it is, they want growth, they don't want, they don't want retraction. They don't want the town not to be able to fund projects, they want steady growth. They want purposeful growth. They don't want the town just to wither away and die, that's how I took it.
It ain't going to do that.
But it's like they want it, not anybody else.
Yeah. Across the board.
I got mine, I, hey, don't change it.
What is the number one priority for Fairview moving forward? Why don't you take a guess at what seventy percent said?
Improve growths.
Retain our character. That's third on the list, sir. Maintaining, maintaining streets, water, sewer, and blank. More jobs. Nobody answered more housing options. Growth. Community events.
We have those, we have great ones.
Everybody does, yeah.
Well, they won't just have a great one, they want more.
They want more.
So, what I'm going to do for you all is I'm going to give you a list of very rough, very cramped land use policy concepts, ideas, policies, and have you, over the December holidays, start helping me figure out what these answers mean to Fairview. So an example I'll give you, uh, if we say more housing, let's say that's one of your goals, more housing. I would say that based on this survey result, based on comments from you all and comments from staff, because remember, I'm writing this plan for you all. It's not the way Michael thinks it should be done, it's Michael keeping you legal, that's really all it is. So, with more housing, promote, uh, single-family residential housing where appropriate, where density can be achieved. You all might want to consider what's called the conservation cluster model. That density would still be one dwelling unit for forty thousand square feet, but you want to preserve open space. So that may be something you want to look into, study. So maybe your lot size gets reduced to twenty-eight thousand, twenty-one thousand square feet, but the density can't increase. So if you're allowed fifty units, I'm just giving you the example, you're still going to have the same fifty units, just developed on less property with more open space reserved.
I didn't like it, I didn't like what you said the first time, but.
I understand.
Because it was just, and, in my mind, and, and it's what the, the, the major subdivision tried doing, which was just, you know, they, they put in a high, high, I think it was like a point two was what they wanted, or even higher than that, remember?
Was that the available?
The V. Basically, they, they settled up next to three hundred acres of, uh, unbuildable floodplain, and they go, well, look at this. Technically, we're not point, some, some acre, we're point this acre here, because we're, we're adding in all this unbuildable floodplain, and it's just.
And I, that's a valid argument, I don't have a problem with that. I don't write warnings as that way, but that still doesn't diminish your point, that's, it's, it's a valid point, and I understand it. So if you have your typical, what I'll call conventional subdivision, I'm just drawing something basic. This is how it's going to look, because it's forty thousand square foot per lot, it's the road, no open space, flat-out development. Now, I understand that to you, I'm not saying this is wrong, there's nothing wrong with that, there is nothing wrong with that. The one option that we would ask you to consider, because it actually preserves the integrity of the existing property, is if you allow for clustering, you get the same density that you would have had originally, with all that open space.
Do we have to like either one of those options?
Well, that's just, that's just bigger's court there.
I'm just giving you from a practical standpoint what the profession would encourage you to think about.
Be open-minded about it, give it some thought, there's, there's, there's areas that would, it would work, it wouldn't work for everybody. But it would for some, some, some time.
I guess the problem is when you start talking about floodplain being part of your open area, that there's so much major limitation what you're doing in the floodplain. You can have trails, that's it.
Well, you can develop a house, you can develop a house in the floodplain as long as you call your flood damage prevention workers.
Costs some money, too.
Now, I don't like people that develop in floodplain, but I'm a floodplain manager, so I don't want people developing in a floodplain. And, you know, I used to work in accounting that required all floodplain to be left in undisturbed open space. So we promoted the conservation cluster model subdivision to preserve sensitive areas in open space, but developers were required to give a certain percentage of open space that was usable for direct purposes, public dedication. So, it's all how you structure your ordinance. And again, I'm not telling you this to change your mind, I just want you to have the facts, and you're going to give me your feedback. And I respect the fact, I understand you still don't like it. And again, I, I'm not here to try to convince you you should do it this way, I'm just going to give you the option.
I'm just telling you how it's been, attempted to be used against us in the past.
I hear you.
Well, and I think that like what you're talking about, with the housing structure being smaller, then the, the units are going to be not as expensive, right? Or do you build like a bigger?
Not necessarily.
I mean, not necessarily, well, not necessarily, but I mean, in this, in this capacity, not like the previous.
I think it's going against our view of how we want our communities to look. When you're clustering homes together, people aren't going to care that there's three hundred acres behind it that have been used. They're going to say, those houses are all. There's going to be, there's four houses within fifteen feet of each other, we don't like the view of that, we want them to be more sparse.
Right. But again, there's nothing wrong with that.
Michael, I love the question too, are building standards, can we have higher building standards than the federal government?
Uh, only if you adopt the rule and have your own inspections department enforcing, so you have to hire your own inspections department. Union counties have to do it for you.
Because the federal standards, to me, are not, I think, they need to be raised.
Well, it's the international, it's the international building code, and I, I will tell you what you already know, sir. It's being watered down by the International Code, Council, and some state lawmakers, uh, as it relates to the Department of Insurance, I'm not going to try to convince you that you don't have a concern, because you do. What struck me as interesting, and that's the word choice I'll use, because I can't use more colorful words. It used to be a single-family residence was what you would think. Single-family, one family living in it, or duplex. Anything else had to meet the commercial building code. So a triplex, a quadruplex had to meet commercial code. Code's been revised that single-family, by definition, the residential building code now includes triplexes and quadruplexes. So three dwelling units and effectively one structure, four dwelling units and one structure. So, that's happened, that state building code. So the direct answer, sir, if you want to be more restrictive, you're going to have to.
We had to have, but I was just, yeah, I was getting ready to ask you, I had a note there about inspection process, because that's what I was thinking.
Yeah. And remember, the building codes.
They may have to have more people on the airport.
Well, you, you would have to have more people, you'd have to have the properly certified people, that's the bigger issue. And, and I will tell you, in six years of working with and focus, um, we have seen major deficits uh, in building inspections and in planning, as people retire, people age out. There is not the plethora of, what I'll say is professional or highly-trained staff taking their places. There was a movement at one point in time to actually look to privatize or allow privatized inspections to occur. So a firm like InFocus would have its own cadre of inspectors. Problem is, they never tell you about the liability insurance you have to cover to do that. So switching gears, your community profile, your census data, and I want you to review this, I don't think you'll have any surprises, I'm going to have to go back and update this. I will tell you that due to the recently seized federal government shutdown, we had a lot of fun trying to come up with your data. Why? Because the website wasn't being maintained, and it was crashing, and some of the data was even missing. Uh, I'm comfortable with the population figures and the breakdown of age and sex that you have based on three different data sources, but we are going to be verifying this data. So just keep that in mind as you're looking at it with a pinch of salt, okay?
What was our population?
Population in two thousand twenty was three thousand four hundred and sixty-three persons.
One of my kind of guess questions is, you're using Guilford County as a projection model?
No, Guilford County is only appearing in this because I use the table model to create your data tables. That's going away.
Yeah, so like, you know, you've got schools that are.
Yeah, the schools, no, no, that, that's my fault, because I use a data model to, to get you this data, and I didn't eliminate it.
Our schools are capacitated or does it go that detail?
It will not go into that detail, but I will provide you what. It will not go into that detail, but I will provide you what your Union County School District tells me his population base is, now, let's talk a little bit about that, cause that's an interesting conundrum. Uh, and Fairview doesn't have any real involvement that none of the towns do realistically. Um, and I'll give you the example of where I used to work in Orange County. So Orange County technically school systems. Chapel Hill Harbor City School District, which is the county overall program, then Orange County, which is the entire county. Several schools in the town of Hillsborough. Which actually served as the recipient. For several county projects for elementary specifically and middle, were over capacity, in fact, they were at a hundred. So Orange County schools were screaming, you can't. For capacity. Well, here's the problem, you have a total of six elementary schools in Orange County. When you take the full length, breadth and width of those schools, you're only at eighty-four percent capacity. Your issue isn't development, it's you lack spine to redistress, says the guy that doesn't have to go medialed that by the parents, and I respect that, but. You're gonna have, in my humble opinion, some of the similar problems here. You may have local schools that have a capacity problem, but is it truly the school at? The school system at a capacity problem? Or is it that one school because of what's going into it, and there has to be a larger solution to that problem than just building more schools. Make sense?
Yeah.
Um.
I had, I got a question, just popped into my head, why did they decide to mend the school out there when they could have just, could have put everything here?
Say what?
They put, why didn't they build a school here?
Well, it, oh, that one's. That's a good question, they didn't have enough room.
Oh, they didn't have enough land they had, oh.
And the sewer system, they have a.
Oh, yes.
Irrigate, irrigated system, see, we have irrigated sewer systems now, for every school's want.
Yeah.
They don't have a problem. Uh, but they're maintained, but, oh. The one in the. New Salem, we have it to see, excellent system for schools. It's coming, that kind of system, engineered system is coming, and the state's gonna have to have pressure to approve them for developer, I'm telling you, it's gonna come eventually. It's gonna start small, but then they're gonna catch on.
Of course, I think you're right.
And that's why the land use planning effort is so important. Um, not that this should concern you, but obviously, based on US Census data, the, the residents of the community are predominantly Caucasian, I don't think that's a surprise. Several people identified as some other race or even more than one race. Uh, so this is why your graph is skewed the way it's skewed. Um, there's no problem with that, uh, it's just fact, there's nothing for you to react to. From a population projection standpoint. We use the State Office of Demographics. We anticipate you all by. Um. As you continue to move forward by twenty thirty. Have about thirty-five hundred residents, twenty forty to have thirty-six hundred residents, that's just based on growth projections as we've seen them. From our standpoint, you're not going to become a large urban municipality.
I approve about thirty home sites a year, probably.
Yeah.
About two thirty.
So in terms of households and families. Sixty percent were married couples. Twenty-three percent male, a household and a spouse, and then fourteen percent female, okay? Now, why are all these statistics important? They become important as you start looking at some of your policy initiatives. And that also forms the basis if you ever go, go to get grants. To be blunt, the people you're applying for grants are gonna want this data, so it's now one central location. Uh, housing inventory, eighty-five percent were single family homes. Um. One percent were in multi-unit structures. Thirteen percent were manufactured homes. That's based on the census data.
That's close.
Uh, financial characteristics. Uh. Predominantly, it's thirty percent owners with mortgage. Owners without mortgage and renters in your community. Education. Most everybody in the community has a high school diploma or equivalent, twenty-four percent are college educated.
I would think that would be an honor.
I understand. From an income standpoint. Yeah.
Yeah, did you read by the age of percentages for the community yet?
No, that data was not available, so I've gotta provide it. In terms of education.
No, in terms of the chart you were, uh, this.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you already went by the, uh, the age brackets that the community is.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was the first slide, my apologies.
You're listening, I was curious.
Okay, I'm sorry.
See how back and weighted we are?
Yep.
Yeah.
You have an aging population here, which is nothing.
Well, the issue's gonna be is when they aren't there anymore, and they sell their land, so.
Yes.
Right.
That's, that's the tipping point right there, that's why this is sixty and up, and they're not.
That's why this gets important, correct. Um, from a household income standpoint, uh, minimum of twenty percent of your residents earn between one hundred to one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right below that is the fifty to seventy-four thousand, so almost forty percent of your residents earn over seventy-four thousand dollars. Or, excuse me, earn over fifty thousand dollars. You have a fairly low poverty rate when you compare it to the county, on your very little SNAP participation.
What's the delta value of poverty?
It's the federal poverty level, so I believe it's gonna be now under nineteen thousand dollars, if I remember the federal estimate correctly. For, for Mary filing joint, and then I think it's fourteen thousand for single. I'll provide that in here, I guess, so you have that answer.
Yeah, that's why, it's one of my things, when we say, you know, poverty level, well, then we have to say what it is.
Yep. So. I'll admit my boo for the public schools.
You have many poor people in this community.
Well, you had me looking these up, it's like, I've never heard of these.
Yeah.
I go, wow, I have a real close one.
That's my fault.
And even on the universities, I was looking that up too, like, I didn't know that was an act.
No, I was in a hurry to get these two. And charter schools are gonna become a little different, I hope.
Yeah, well, charter schools, I think a lot of people around here, we have private school, but there's also a lot of people that have charter.
I'm surprised that this church dinner hadn't done a product, really, much as they're grown up.
It's in the secret works. I think they're investigating, starting it.
So there weren't any surprises for me or Ed, other than my type of, uh, were there any surprises for you all? It's pretty much as consistent with what you think. Yeah, so. We'll be updating your data once the US Census Bureau actually.
Gets back to work.
Gets back to work.
Aren't they back for?
Yeah, they're behind, they're behind.
Now they're behind.
Now they're behind. So going back to the fluin' real quick. Obviously green, you wanna study key areas, you're not making any decisions, but you wanna study here is the only area that you're definitively comfortable with, and again, I'm sorry, I don't have the words to mount. But commercial area notes somewhere right in here, and then what we call the downtown area. Okay, and then we're studying whether or not there's room in the southern portion of the county for any type of, what I'll call neighborhood development, which could be more than one unit per acre. And you have heart blocks, tell me I'm crazy at your next meeting, and that's okay.
Ed, have you heard any more limit from the county about, okay, waste water treatment plants in this area?
I think that's the state, but.
We were saying that the state was talking about taking over, um, that kind of planning as a regional level. As far as making, uh, the counties were having control of it, so it was gonna be, it was gonna be like a tab area of waste management. Instead of it being Union County to make those decisions, and since it becomes a regional thing, then it's.
Yeah, that's my opinion, and I stand by that, and I think that's where the state's going, you're correct, sir, as I was telling Ed before the meeting. There is some discussion, uh, in Guilford between High Point, Greensboro, uh, about how they're gonna divvy up the rules, because since Greensboro and High Point are the two. Main municipalities with sewer and water infrastructure, I think they're gonna be leading the regional model in that particular area.
Ed, do you think it's reasonable to contact Unionville Land Board and say, hey? What's your map going to look like, you know, compared to ours?
He's working on that.
Okay, yeah, I'm working with Unionville doing the same thing, the only thing I'm not doing for them is their future land use map, but I will tell you what I think. Their position's gonna be once, uh, their staff and I.
You need to do a good job.
Well, you better hurry, son, just getting ready to retire.
Well, Melanie is a, is a great resource, and she and I are gonna have a great fun, a lot of fun together, so. Here's your homework. I can't say it, I don't know why, here's your homework. I'll let you look at my beautiful family, thank God they look like their mother.
You did good.
Uh, they look like their mother, I thank God.
You married up.
I married up, yes, sir. Um, I'd like you to take the future land use map, and Ed has a couple copies here, but I'd like you to take the future land use map and start looking. At areas that you may want us to study further development. Your elected officials are gonna get this same update, and they're gonna get the same homework assignment, okay? So I don't want you to feel that you're gonna be moving forward in the dark, you're gonna be getting some direction from your duly elected officials. We already know the two categories we're eliminating. And what you're gonna be starting to look at in January is your table permitted uses. We're actually getting to land use issues, isn't it gonna be fun? Uh, February, we'll talk about subdivisions, and I'll give you my proposal on subdivisions at that point in time, there won't be a lot of surprises. I will say this, you all asked if we could reconsider. Our suggestion that you look at, uh, handling, if you wanted to try to handle manufactured housing parks. As I told Ed today, your overwhelming concerns about it, we're gonna abandon the construct, you, you say you don't want it, I'm not gonna, obviously I'm not forcing anything on you, but. Remember, you're gonna allow manufactured housing as a permitted use of property on effectively forty thousand square foot lot.
That's what we're doing.
That's what we're doing.
And then you turn it off. Throw us down our throats like you're hot.
Well, remember, state law says you can't, you can't deny, you can't reject, you can't prohibit a manufactured housing.
You can regulate.
You can regulate the living daylights out of it.
Well, if you, somebody's gonna put that kind of money in, it's like, I think they just did one up here, it looks, it looks good.
The modular is becoming more popular, I think, than the manufactured one.
Well, modulars are, are, I think modulars are better because they're built for the controlled environment, they're built for the single family residential building code.
Yeah, although they just did one up here, it looks, I think it looks great, modular, that is, that, yeah. I mean, if I built it on the, on our forty thousand and took out of it, that's, that's what it is.
Right, you, you have less of a concern.
Right.
Okay, so will it be possible for you all over the next thirty or so odd days to?
Oh, I, no, it's so, uh, now, I wouldn't want somebody to come in and put a, just. Put a development of that in there.
Well, now, for your current ordinance, I could come in as a subdivision, create twenty lots and put manufactured homes on them, that's perfectly legal under your current code.
The regulation is a little different, um, single wide than double wide.
Correct. We're still gonna enforce your current code in terms of what you are only gonna permit, but I can come in, do a twenty or thirty lot subdivision, and it could all just be manufactured housing based on your current code.
I don't think our land values are gonna make that appealing to people.
Right.
I don't disagree with you, but. I just, I just gotta tell you what the, what the ordinance would be.
I think it's enough for me just over three hundred.
I agree.
Yeah.
And you're not wrong at all, but.
I have a lot of replacement.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
Just keep that in mind, and I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, I'm just saying keep it in mind. So as you're looking at this map, I'd like you to start playing.
That's a good reason we need to stick to the R, R forty, think about it, if it was three, you could put three on it.
Actually, the way, right, the way I've structured the ordinance, you could not do manufactured housing in the SFR two or the SFR three. So I, I, it's a good point to bring up, but I, that's already kind of an address.
I couldn't get out.
Because you're not gonna allow them, uh, for the table permitted uses. Your table, your table permitted uses specifically say where you're gonna allow manufactured housing, right now, if you don't allow them in the district, they can't go through. That's perfectly legal for state laws, as long as you can have a place where you can, which is. Correct, which is becoming SFR one, but yes, there was.
Ideally, we're gonna allow R three, we could say we can't have manufactured housing.
Correct. That's not the intent of the SFR three, the intent is single family only. Most of which are gonna have a single family residence.
No matter, R three's gonna be the same sense no matter how it's.
And then again, I respect you all's opinion. And I'm glad you know, I'm not trying to be argumentative, I just need to give you options. Cause I need to keep you out of court.
I feel that if North Carolina's gonna find a way to control Arizona, and they're gonna do it whether you paint this map purple or green.
Yeah.
I don't dispute that either.
At the same time, I, I completely understand what you mean, I mean.
I want to see them enforce it, have you been to the DMV? Have you been there? I'm from Georgia, it does not happen there, you walk in, you get to drive twice, and you walk out, the problem is that everything goes to the state. Instead of it being by the county, when you move to Georgia, you walk in and you say, I've just moved to this house in this county, and the county gets your tax revenue.
Remember that DMVs here also are private contractors.
And that too.
They, they may have state staff there doing certain activities, but they're typically private contractors. Or there used to be DMV officers that were technically state officers.
There must not be a lot of money in it, or we'd have more offices too.
Well, that's. So, your homework, what I'd like, again, play with the map, there's no wrong answer with the map. The only wrong answer you're gonna give me is one you don't think about and ask and, and play with, okay? Remember, we're gonna kill two of the land use categories, and I want your feedback on some of the wording to make sure you're comfortable with it. Um.
The mixed use and the.
Yeah, the mixed use of industrial neighborhoods going away, there's no call for it here. Remember what I want you to also do, is take a look at the survey results, because you're gonna be getting a separate document from me, starting to flesh out some possible goals and policies. And it's those survey responses that help form the basis of obviously your policies. Any questions with me? You've all been very attentive, and I appreciate the, the, the feedback and the discussion, cause that's the only way we're gonna get through this together, and. There's no such thing as a wrong answer here, elaboration.
One of the plans that gets, I guess I keep thinking about, is the long-term.
Yes, sir.
Mixed use on itself, which is becoming very, very popular in your bigger cities, and I can see migrating into town Fairview itself. So when would we want to try and go back and visit the mixed use?
Well, I'm creating a mixed use construct for you as a conditional settlement district, which means somebody would have to come and rezone property, have a site plan for you all to review and act on. I'm already creating that, it's a question of where it's gonna go in your future land use map. Right now, I don't have that answer.
I agree with you, Doug, it, it, it's out there, but we're a long way from.
Yeah, there's a bigger issue, is you don't have the infrastructure to support it right now, and you are not.
Infrastructure, you're not gonna have it.
You don't look that attractive. But I will tell you in, in all candor, and again, I'm sorry to keep comparing you to other communities, but it's a practical example. Summerfield had a gentleman that did a thousand acres of mixed use development, including apartment homes, townhomes, single family residences, open space, galore, it was all gonna be. On a package treatment plan. That's the thousand acres that the General Assembly D annexed out of Summerfield, and it's now gonna be subject to county land use restrictions, and he's moving forward with this project.
And the county's not gonna make him attach the sewer?
I'm gonna answer that question two ways, sir. I've heard that they're still gonna make use of a package treatment system, I've also heard rumor that the city of Greensboro's gonna let them tie onto their sewer system, which is in the area, just pay double utility rates.
I know.
So the reason why I'm giving you the two answers is. I shouldn't know what I told you here. I shouldn't know, but I told you here. I know what the answer is based on what the county's telling me. So, any questions of me? And continue to look at the documentation you had, there's no cutoff for that, I want you to give me any, and all feedback you want.
I do have a question, more affluent communities who are, I guess, more dispersed than we are, some, like Boone, how are they handling not having as many, do they have more services than we do? I know we only have, we only have a couple of services, and North Carolina's saying they want, what, five?
Well, to become a town right now, you need to provide about three to four services, and some of that can range from police, public safety, which could be contracted. Could be a public works department, which could be contracted. Could be planning.
Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec.
Let's say more affluent communities, like Bannoral, Boone area. How are, are they, do they have these services? So, it's basically just more rural areas, like, like us, who don't have the services, but more dispersed, I guess, nicer areas or more affluent areas.
There's nothing wrong with this area, but I know what you're saying.
Or, they would provide those services just based on their tax rate?
Yes, because of their tax rate. So, there's Rutherfordton, Rutherfordton County, the town of Rutherfordton obviously provides a, it's skeleton, I'm not trying to disparage them, but they have a police force, they have a fire department, they provide planning services, they provide garbage pickup, there's a park and rest department, there's lighting. So, their town provides services and they charge the appropriate fee for it. Now, let's pick on Chapel Hill as a counter example. Chapel Hill provides myriad of services, they don't provide water, sewer. They contract with Olasa, which is an independent utility entity, it's actually by state law, government entity, and it's on run. And they provide the utility services to Carbo, Chapel Hill, and UNC.
So, it's really gonna be smaller, more, not as affluent communities, like maybe ours, where you're gonna get whacked by.
Small rain-range communities have the potential to have some issues they'll have to address, correct?
Because we're not affluent enough to provide so many services like a more affluent.
We are, if you want to pay for it.
Well, that's also gonna be a tax rate, and I've heard, I've heard the comments about, we just got our property taxes reevaluated, and those went up, and I've heard about what people think about that. So, for the town to say, well, we're, you know, we need to provide more resources, or, you know, our town's tax rate's gonna go up, or it's not gonna go well.
I can tell you that there's obviously nothing we're doing with the comp plan or the ordinance that's gonna require any increase in fees, taxes, regular loans lines, or additional services. I think that you all, as a community, along with about sixty or seventy other communities, are gonna have to be studying whether or not, as the state starts doing the study bill, and as the state starts looking at who gets to be a town, whether or not you're gonna need to add services to avoid potential to have your charter vote. Summerfield is an example, and again, forgive me for comparing you to them, but Summerfield, as an example, decided to add garbage collection service, and they effectively created a public works department, they're gonna do lighting. They contract with the sheriff, but police may have volunteer fire. And they're hoping that will save off any attempt by the General Assembly to eliminate.
We do park, fire, what else is?
Planning.
Planning, fires are what it is right now.
Park.
Park.
And there's nothing wrong with those services, it's just keep in mind, I think that the, I think that the, I think things are about to change, I don't know how they're gonna change yet, that's my problem. My goal was just to help you figure out how you can best adapt to that change quickly. Well, you'll be getting some information from me in a couple weeks, you have your homework. If you all have questions, please feel free to reach out to me, and then through Ed. I'm happy to answer questions, provide additional information if I'm here. And we will keep you in the loop of what your elected officials say.
One of the things that you, I don't think we've explained or anything on, if you need some log camp drawings, just yell. I can do this.
We have a log camp set up, we haven't gotten there yet, but yeah. I appreciate that, we may take you up on that. Well, everyone, thank you again for your attention, your candor, I appreciate it. And have a wonderful life of you.
And it sounded like Merry Christmas, too.
You'll at least hear from me in memo form for Christmas, but yeah.
We gotta get a bonus?
Your bonus is my enduring love and loyalty.
You can keep that.
No, I have one, I just don't have it with me.
I've got a bucket full of that stuff.
All right, our next, I don't know the agenda, is public comments, we open that up for any public to make a comment.
I'd like to make one, all right?
Sure. Come on up to the podium, state your name for us, please.
My name's Alan Rosenberg, I live at one oh five George Watkins Trail, which is right off of West Hunkin. Listening to this today, you know, one of the concerns that I have is that we had a home, and I don't remember the homeowner's name, that lived across the street on, off of West Hunkin. They put their elderly couple, they put their house up for sale. They had an offer on the house, and they found out that that people that, see, were gonna buy the house, was gonna, they wanted to run a trucking company out of the house. Those people decided they were not gonna sell to them out of respect for the neighbors in the area. So, when we're talking about these, you know, what you're working on here, you know, to have some type of industrial manufacturing-type district in, in the town to where those, those opportunities could be built or approved, to where it's not affecting, you know, somebody that spent a lot of money, a lot of time building a house, developing a property, where that's gonna affect, would affect my property values, with the time that I go to sell my home, where they're seeing trucks come and go out of a place across the street from mine. So, you know, that's something that, that's, I would like you to consider as you look at this, to have an area to where you're gonna approve that. I mean, you can't do anything with what's already there in the town, but I think to have some type of control over that in the future of where it goes and how it affects our property values.
Presently, that couldn't go there.
I mean.
Presently, a trucking operation couldn't.
Yeah. Well, that may be so, but that's what they're gonna try to do.
Are you comparing with a table of uses in our land use order?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Table of uses? Uses? Okay, I've been wanting to go. Use, a, a, a table of use in a particular zoning area is set off.
Right.
So, residential is correct.
Right.
That would be considered light industrial, would not be allowed in a residential.
Correct.
Now, they could come to us and request a rezoning, and that's a public hearing and everything else, where we would be listening to the general public and making a decision, you know, about it. But if they just want to, right in the middle of a neighborhood, I don't think that's gonna go very far, to be honest with you.
Okay, well, that's good to know, you know, I mean, we're, you know, technically, I would look at where we live as a neighborhood, right? We're on eight and a half acres, people across the street, fourteen acres, you know, I don't classify them as.
It's a neighborhood.
It is to a certain extent, but.
They're very little.
Yeah, they're safe, I guess.
Very large block neighborhood.
You know, where you've got sidewalks, where you've got, you know.
That's a subdivision.
Montero.
That's a subdivision, you're in a neighborhood.
Three houses per acre. Yeah. That, to me, is how I view a neighborhood.
Well, I would ask you, where do you think it should go? Because when Brett Hagler, this road right here, they, we council approved, what was it, agricultural company, it was a lawn care, and they already had, what was it, natural gas, and they had a shop. And the people right here, was it two shops? The people on this corner right here said the same exact thing you said. They said, it's gonna affect our property value, it's gonna affect this and that. And I honestly, I had no problem with that, I was on a plan worth time, but it, you say that there should be an area for this kind of stuff, I'll tell you, no matter where you want to put on that map, there's gonna be someone who's got the same thing you just said, who got an issue with it. So, I agree that there should be an area.
Right.
But you're gonna have a tough time convincing the people who live with X amount of miles to that place.
But you know, just bringing up a point of something.
Absolutely.
To be concerned with and to consider as you look at those things that. I think what you're talking about, most people would be agreeing in.
Right. There was a very similar situation that got shot down.
Right.
It just needs to be logically located, and that's obviously what you all are talking about, but this gentleman's talking about, and we're gonna ditch you there. It just, we need a logical progression of where it's reasonable. Forgetting for an objective, but I'm.
Or people don't have to follow the rules, do they?
Yes.
They do in my neighborhood, did they help?
Yes, they have to follow the rules. Those do.
You know, a lot of times, what I found, you know, because I was on the planning board at Indian Trail for a couple years, when I lived in Montero. I was also president of HOA at Montero for eight years. So, what happens with a lot of people is they just do it, and they beg for forgiveness, right?
Yes, that's what I mean.
So. Yeah, just say, oops, I'm sorry, can I get up there? Right, right, you know. And then, you know, sometimes it's hard not to do that, I mean, it's spending attorney's fees, it's going through a whole process to do that, and.
I think you're always gonna have that.
Yeah, you'll never get it worked at all, to a hundred percent, but, but, you know, I've just been involved in it, I've seen it happen, and, you know, just something to consider as you look at this.
But we think you have a beautiful neighborhood.
Thank you. Well, thank you.
It's a neighborhood.
You're welcome, come anytime.
Thanks for coming. All right, thank you.
Hit me back.
All right, folks, I got seven twenty-seven on my phone.
Let me, let me interject one thing, we will have a December meeting. Michael will not be here, but we will have a meeting, we've got a subdivision to consider. Six lot.
Where at?
Concord Highway. So, let's just go through the process, you'll get all the information, and, but we'll, we'll have a meeting, it's not a complicated issue, I don't think.
Under seven's.
Under five.
Under five.
Yes. Over five is like major. The, you have to see it, and the council has to approve. Under five, I can approve.
Okay, any other comments, thoughts?
Motion to adjourn.
Happy Thanksgiving? Oh, over here. All right. Okay, all the papers they die.
Yeah, true.
Thank you.
Thank you all again, appreciate you.
Thank you, sir.